Evening. My name is Ravine Jimenez and as a member of the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties, we would like to welcome you to this virtual candidate forum. The League is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates. In presenting these forums, it is our goal to provide opportunities for voters to be, to become better informed about the people who are running for public office. The candidate forums have been pre-recorded in conjunction with Northwest Public Broadcasting. The candidate forums will also be available for viewing through additional partners, such as on the Mid-Columbia Badger Club website and on the cities of Richland and Pasco's websites and TV channels for the prospective races, as well as the League's Facebook page and website. The current local races are all nonpartisan positions. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Matt Lovelace, from Murrow College of Communications, WSU Pullman. Please join us in welcoming Matt.
On behalf of Northwest Public Broadcasting, thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Matt Lovelace, your moderator and scholarly assistant professor in the Murrow College at Washington State University. Now, tonight, as we've been doing each day this week, we'll discuss issues with candidates for a number of races in Benton and Franklin Counties. Now, today, we'll meet candidates for races in both West Richland and Pasco. We have eight candidates and a total of four races to get to tonight over about the next 55 minutes. So, these are going to move along very briskly. We have a list of questions submitted by the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. Responses right now are set at either 90 seconds or one minute apiece. We will give an equal amount of time to each candidate on a particular question, and our first response, as usual, goes to the person who will appear first on the ballot. Now, I reserve the right to stop candidates once their time limit is done, and fairly adjust response times to fit within our program, and our candidates are aware of these ground rules. Well, we were able to meet a couple of candidates in races for the West Richland City Council last night. If you missed them, you can find them on our video playlist on the Northwest Public Broadcasting YouTube channel. Tonight, we continue our look at West Richland, and we'll begin with the position three race between incumbent Gail Brown and challenger May Hayes. Ms. Brown, Ms. Hayes, both here, thank you so much for connecting. We have given you the ground rules, and I'll remind you here, there are time limits for your responses. The first couple, we do have set at 90 seconds, the last two limited to one minute. And first on the ballot is the incumbent, Ms. Brown, and a chance to tell us about your priorities. Really, what's your biggest goal in running for this position and why?
My biggest goal is to move the city forward, but in a holistic manner that we're catching the whole city. We've been extremely focused in putting all our resources into new development, while not really paying attention to the millions of dollar deficit that we have in our current city. So, we just need to get more focused, I think, kind of look at some of the other departments and the other needs that we have. I know our staff is just booked up with that. We don't have a lot of time for some of this other stuff. So, possibly, at least getting some kind of renovation group, not renovation, downtown area group that can meet and decide some improvements that we could do to increase retail sales, businesses, and so forth down here.
And Ms. Hayes, I'll ask you the same question as you sort of assess your goals in running for this position. What is it you want to accomplish and why?
Well, I think I would be a huge asset to the city council, and I'll stay grounded and very positive person that I am, and to remain forward-thinking on all the issues, and to work timelessly to continue the move, to move the city forward in a very productive way. And I think we have a great start. I think the city's heading in some wonderful ways that they're going, but to continue the planned growth, the infrastructure, getting in ahead of time of the growth, and to maintain the high quality of life that all the residents and city wants to have, and for the businesses to really get in there. And I've worked with businesses for several years now, and the new ones coming in, we have a lot of new ones, and it's so exciting, and a lot of existing ones that we want to pay attention to their needs and what's happening with them. So, I just think it would be a great opportunity for me to sit on city council, because I think that I have a lot to offer, the council, with my history.
All right. Thank you very much. And question number two, and Ms. Hayes, you'll go first here, and certainly as we talk about COVID-19, and really any issue, a lot of communities handling it differently, probably no two exactly the same. So, the question is, what should the city's position be as federal and state COVID mandates come down?
Well, I believe the city, we have to abide by the state and federal mandates that are coming down. And it's, I think, one of the issues with COVID over the time has been understanding the variety of options and different ways that can be looked at that's coming down, that the city has to figure out what is all this means. So, I think the city's done a great job, and we really have, all the businesses and the residents are really trying to abide by the guidelines that the city has to abide by. So, I think they're really doing a great job. So, I think we are all working together, and I think it's brought us closer together as a community, to know that we can help each other out and be there for each other, and meet all the guidelines that the state and federal have for us.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Hayes. And Ms. Brown, same question, and I don't know, you can take it any direction you want to, at least in terms of enforcement or messaging. What do you think the city's position should be when it comes to federal and state COVID mandates as they sort of come down from on high?
Well, right now, we're all shut down. The city offices are all shut. We're doing everything virtual. Our meetings are all through Zoom. So, the city itself and its employees aren't doing a lot. Well, I guess we have the guys out in the field, but I don't know exactly what all the businesses are doing. I know we've got a webpage and a Facebook as the city, and what the messages on those is to mask up, get your vaccines. So, I think we're, the city has been trying to stay with the state guidelines. I don't think, and I don't know if we want to get into the business of enforcing that. I don't know that we'd want to ask the officers to do that, and they probably wouldn't even if we did. I haven't seen, you know, running into some of the stores and stuff. It seems like everybody's been compliant. I haven't seen any noticeable people doing without the mask and so forth. So, I think overall, we're doing good out here.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Now, let's move on to question number three, and you know, we do have, we've left some extra time, so we're going to keep responses at 90 seconds for a time limit here for this round. And of the many issues besides COVID you may face, obviously, the hope is that you face several more than COVID over the next few years. What do you think will be the most controversial that you would have to deal with if elected? And Ms. Brown, you're up.
I think the growth is going to be, we just aren't going to have so much, and it takes up so much time that it's, like I said, difficult to get the holistics of the city done. I don't know if that's going to be staff. I don't know if that's going to be contracts. We do a lot of contracting. I don't know what the budget would do with either one of them. We've been pushing a lot of infrastructure out to the new development out there. I know we're going to do a new well for 3.4. They're at bombing range, but we're also going to put one in at 3.5 out toward the new growth. So, it's just, you know, deciding where the money goes, basically, is kind of what's going to happen. We do have some plans. We're not really following them right now. We're, I don't think we're quite focused. That we, and I said this last night at the meeting, that we either need to move forward with the plans that we have, or bring it back to the citizens, and, you know, let them know that we are changing it, if they want it changed, and so forth. But we've kind of gotten off the road here, and I think we need to go back and relook at it.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. And Ms. Hayes, same question to you in terms of issues you think might be controversial or the most important, or maybe the ones you're preparing for the most if you're elected for this position?
Well, I think the growth could be, but I think that the city's really been working very hard to make sure the infrastructure and everything, we're ahead of the game. So, we're always ahead of the growth, and so, that's good. Some other issues, I think, anything coming up to do with our police, I want to make sure that our police are taken care of, and I know we have some federal and state things, mandates that have come down. And so, I think that taking care of our police and fire and make sure their issues and their needs are handled, I think is very important. And then, as growth, then there's the issues of the quality of life, and I want to assure that, and work and do everything I need to do to the quality of life in West Richland with the growth and everything that goes along with it, that we have the parks in, that we need for each of the areas, and it just continues to work. Everybody wants to move to West Richland because of our quality of life, and we're such a tight-knit community. So, I'd like to work on making sure all those issues are taken care of.
Wonderful. Thank you. On our fourth and final topic of the night, I asked you both to evaluate what sets West Richland apart from maybe other communities in the region. We kind of touched on that. We'll keep the time limit at 90 seconds again. Ms. Hayes, describe an issue that is unique to West Richland and how you think it could be resolved.
I just, I'd still keep going back to growth. I think it's unique how we were so small, and now we're up over 17,000 residents here. And so, we have the issue of us having enough businesses and collecting enough sales tax, so all of our residents don't have to go out of town for services. So, I think that we're really stepping up. There's a lot of businesses coming in, and we have a lot of growth, so that's driving it too. So, just keeping up to where we can be able to have all the services needed, so all of our residents can stay here locally instead of going across the river or going into the other towns. And so, that will really help with our sales tax issue that we have with the city.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Hayes. And Ms. Brown, once again, a minute 30, if you want to use up all your time. I'd like you to describe an issue that you think is unique to West Richland. And frankly, when you said 17,000, I was a little behind when I said 15,000 at the beginning of the program. But what do you think is an issue that's unique to the area, and how do you think that that could be resolved if you were to stay on the council?
I think one of our resources that we could be doing a lot more with is the Akama River. We don't really have much property that the city owns, but we do have the Akama River that, with the dike and everything, we could be using that a lot more. Corps of Engineers private diking, so that could be an issue if we wanted to do that more. The other thing is our uniqueness is that we've only done about half of our growth, and then the other half is basically kind of owned by a single entity. So, I think, you know, to keep the city, I don't know, they'll have to work that out with staff and stuff, but to keep the program and their build-out compatible with what we've got, compatible with what we want to see up there. So, we need to keep it a voicing what, how they want to develop, where they want to develop, to make sure that it all kind of meshes together. We are getting some of these utilities done. They're sending, so those could be an issue.
All right. Wonderful. Well, to both of you, thank you so much. Thank you for the very thoughtful, insightful responses from your area. Gail Brown, May Hayes, candidates for West Richland City Council, position three. Best of luck for the remainder of your campaigns. Have a great night. And our final race in West Richland is the one for mayor and the incumbent there seeking his third four-year term. That incumbent, Mayor Brent Gary, facing a challenge this time from current council member in position seven, Kate Moran. Mr. Gary, Ms. Moran, your time is very much appreciated tonight. We glad you could make it on with us. Now, our line of question comes from the League of Women Voters, and without opening or closing statements tonight, I can tell you, these do get to the heart of what your priorities are, as well as some of your thoughts on some key topics surrounding us at the moment. And the first question, all about goals. Ms. Moran, your 90 seconds begins after I ask this question. What is your biggest goal when it comes to running for this position and why?
My biggest goal coming to running for this position is, I want to make sure that when we are being a city, we are making sure that we are looking at all of our residents to make sure that we are having everybody get the same return on investment, just like everybody else does. And I also want to make sure that we are making sure that we have an open and transparent government, and that we're collaborating with the organizations around us and the municipalities around us, to make sure that we are being good community members, and that we're working together to create the best possible area, not just city, but area, for all of us that are living here. And to make sure that we do this, we need to make sure that we are building our town strong. We need to make sure that we are collaborating, and we need to make sure that we are including the citizens in everything that we do, and making sure that everybody's aware of what is happening at the time. My hope is that we can continue to make this city the best city that it can be, and grow forward in the future in a direction that is best for everybody. Thank you very much. And thank you to the League of Women Voters and to you, Matt.
Well, thank you very much. And we'll turn our attention to Mr. Gary. Like we said, running for your third term, so clearly you're not sick of it yet. What's your biggest goal in running for this position again and why?
And again, I do thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening. As you mentioned, you know, this is my eighth year as mayor and CEO of the city of West Richland, and priorities continue to move forward at this point with the economic development necessities that we have here in the city of West Richland. As we know, you can build cities off of building permits, but you can't maintain cities off of building permits. So, the economic development factor is certainly a priority of mine. I've been successful so far with attracting multiple businesses, probably over 150 jobs, multiple new businesses within the city, two new schools, an administration building for the Richland School District. You know, in addition to partnering with the schools, I've also partnered with Benton County, our sister cities, to continue the collaborations it takes to work together as a unified force in our region, which is very important. Communication cooperation and collaboration is a necessity. And I've worked hard to provide a legacy of financial security and stability through balanced budgets and strong financial practices. So, it's nothing new for me. So, I'll just go ahead and continue on for four more years and get this job done. Thank you.
Mr. Gary, thank you very much. Now, the second question is about COVID. Sorry, didn't know if you thought you'd get off without talking about it tonight. In particular, your role as a city government in handling some of the mandates that get sent down to you. So, Mr. Gary, what should a city's position be? What should your city's position be in regards to federal and state COVID mandates?
Yeah, and that's been a challenge through the entire process. There wasn't an owner's manual or a book of how to deal with a worldwide pandemic. So, it's been a struggle, but we've worked through it. We worked through it through the partnerships of our sister cities as well. Do we like what has been mandated from the state and federal government? Not necessarily. But you take an oath of office. When you take an oath of office, it's to follow the laws of the land. Like them or not, you have to deal with it. So, you try to make the best that you can and make sure that you provide an environment for your employees to work in. I was very fortunate and able to consider all of our employees here at the city essential employees. Therefore, I made sure that nobody was on furlough, didn't have a job. Everybody had a paycheck. Everybody worked as they could remotely, as well as at the city. COVID has been a challenge, and it's not done yet, and it's going to be a while before it's over, unfortunately. But like it or not, you got to deal with it, and we've done very well. And the city is still stronger for it, I believe.
Mr. Gary, thank you very much. And Ms. Moran, same question to you, and I know this, depending on the size of your community, the demographics of your community, maybe this is a different answer everywhere, but what do you think the city's position should be in regards to federal and state COVID mandates as they sort of just come down to you?
Right. Well, I think the biggest thing is recognizing the fact that just as Mayor Gary said, we are, we have to follow what we have been passed down. We do take that oath of office, and we have to follow through with that to make sure that it's done. And I feel that we have done fairly well with that. We have done great for our community. We've done very well for our staff in making sure that they've been protected, and that's something that I would like to continue to do, is to make sure that we are keeping the safety of the community, the safety of the staff in mind whenever we're doing anything as a city, and making sure that if we may agree or disagree with what's being passed down at the national level, at the state level, at the county level, in the end, our job is to make sure that whatever is said that needs to be done gets done, and it's done in a way that is safe, it's done in a way that is equitable, and it's done in a way that makes sense for our community. And not having been in that position during COVID, I can say, I could not say for sure whether I would do anything different, honestly, because the big part about being the mayor in a city that is a strong mayor form of government is making sure that you're listening to those system experts, and that's what we need to continue doing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moran. And moving on to question three, and to some non-COVID topics, in fact, specifically non-COVID. We are still keeping these responses at 90 seconds. For Ms. Moran, aside from the topic of the pandemic, what do you think is the most controversial, most important issue facing West Richland over the next four years? Why? And how would you address it?
Well, I think that there are not a lot of extremely controversial things that we're facing in West Richland, luckily. One of the things, though, that I think has come up and will come up again, is the form of government that we have, and that currently is a strong mayor form of government. And hopefully, we can really take a good, hard look at what the other forms of government is, specifically the manager council form of government. The three larger cities that we have in our area, Pasco, Richland, and Kennewick have them. And it's an opportunity for us to see what they've done and see what we could do, and looking at the size that they are now, and the size they were when they went to manager council, and looking at the size that we are now, and where we're heading in the future. I think that it's important to look at what has been done, and not reinventing the wheel and saying that we're going to go about it our own way, and really focusing on where we've had lessons learned, and moving forward from that. Because when you do have something like a manager council form of government, you can make sure that rather than deciding who the CEO of the city is based off of a popularity contest, you look for people that have the qualifications and the formalized education. And that, I think, is going to be the most controversial thing coming up for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Mr. Gary, I have the same question for you, but I'll preface it with, I sort of did want to talk about that topic of mayor form of government. I don't want to make you respond that way in this question, but I'll preface it with that. But what do you think is the most controversial issue facing your city?
Well, growth is certainly a challenge. We're one of the, probably the second fastest growth city in our region. And when you have growth as rapid as we have, it does have challenges with infrastructure. An example, we normally have 100 homes a year. With the Heights of Red Mountain coming in in Aho, they're putting 200 houses down a year. So, now we've got 300 coming in, and they want to open up more lands. And so, my priorities with staff and myself have been looking at infrastructure. So, water, sewer, transportation, and we need to make sure that we do this right. We only have one chance to get it right, you know. So, we start with the transportation corridors, get it down. So, when the 7,000 acres of the ranch develops, we have a transportation corridor unlike the Road 68 debacle that occurred over there in Pasco with the rapid growth. So, transportation, planning, infrastructure planning, water, sewer, and making sure we continue to have the daytime or car count, the rooftops to draw the economic development with the big box cities, which we have multiple conversations with some big box stores and large commercial outfits, which is what we need to bolster our general fund. So, we could talk later on forms of government, but the wheels are not falling off this wagon, and everything's moving forward and growing great. So, if it ain't broke, we don't need to fix it.
Great. Thank you very much. And the final question, in really, I mean, sort of every topic as you address, it kind of has to do with that growth, including your essential services. And the last question for you both is, would you support forming a regional fire department rather than having individual organizations handle it as they do now, and why are we not? Mr. Gary, you're up.
Are we in the electrical business? No. Are we in the fire business? No. Yeah, we have police. With a regional fire district comes extremely large expenses. Then you have multiple challenges with management. Benton County Fire District does a phenomenal job with all of their services. They provide us with fire service, EMT service, just built a brand-new facility out here in West Richland. So, now they have two facilities here. They're poisoning themselves for the growth at the location of the new facility at the base of the Red Mountain Ranch. So, I believe in what we've got, it works very well right now. And I don't want to put forth any more tax burdens on our taxpayers by standing up a new facility, which would come with some extremely large expenditures. So, there again, too, as I said with the previous comment, things work the way that they are right now, and everybody's planning for the growth in the future. And as long as we do that, smart growth planning, I think everything will be all right. So, I like what we have right now, and would just like to see it stay the way that it is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gary. Appreciate your responses tonight. And before we go, of course, one more opportunity for Ms. Moran to speak. Talking about the, forming a regional fire department as opposed to having individual organizations do it, what are your thoughts on that, and why are we not, do you think, that way?
Well, I think that we have something very similar to that, in that we currently have the Benton County Fire District that we use in West Richland, and we also have the CCOM, the Southeast Communications Center, where we have all of the different emergency responses for Benton and Franklin Counties that work together. Honestly, with this position, the big thing isn't specifically knowing all of the information. It's knowing who to ask the information of, where to find that information. And based off of what I did prior to now, and what I'm doing currently, I feel like my ability to work with large swaths of people and get information, and be that intermediate person that connects people that know things, and finding out the best solution for things, I think that that is probably where I have the best opportunity to make sure that we can work together and come up with the best decision. Is the best decision to create a district for all of us? It could be. Is it better to work separately? That's a really great question. The big thing is knowing who the experts are and who to ask to figure out the best solution.
And that does it for this race for West Richland Mayor. Brent Gary, Kate Moran, we really appreciate your time. And now, we move on to the city of Pasco. Just one race we're honed in on for the city council there. It's the position three race here, a seat currently occupied by outgoing Pasco Mayor Saul Martinez. And running here, Nikki Torres and Leo Peralis, who came out of a four-person primary this summer. Ms. Torres, Ms. Peralis, thank you both for being here. I know you were sent the ground rules, but just a reminder, we have four questions each. We have a 90-second time limit for the first two. We should have a one-minute time limit for the next two. Now, without opening statements, the first question seeks to satisfy some of that. To Ms. Torres, what's your goal in running for this position and why?
So, my goal in running for this position first is because I care about the city of Pasco. It's my town. It's where I grew up. I care about its people, and of course, its future. Some of my goals include fixing our congested West Pasco streets, as well as ensuring everyone has an opportunity for homeownership. Using my experience in economic development, I will work with city officials to bring living wage jobs to our city by attracting new businesses and manufacturing. That is really important to me, because that means that people will have homes that we can afford, and also living wage jobs to help afford those homes, and will help with the reduction of taxes and also homelessness. But also, fixing our West Pasco congested streets. We need to have that connectivity, allow for growth, and that by fixing our streets, that will really help. Also, partnering with our county to fix our street. We need to ensure that we have large enough roads to accommodate commercial vehicles as well.
And I'll ask the same to Mr. Peralis. What's your biggest goal in running for this position and why?
Thank you. I think, I believe the most pressing issue facing Pasco, we're all running strong, and smart recovery from COVID-19, including the city's budget, looking at effective taxation, and so we can ensure economic vitality in our region. One of my goals will be to promote affordable housing. We have a lot of individuals who are being priced out of our community. The current housing price to buy a home is around $400,000. That's way too high for people who are just graduating college and trying to start a family. I also want to ensure that we have safe and thriving neighborhoods in every part of Pasco. And I want to create a true, truly a one Pasco. I think we need to boost funding for law enforcement and our, and our fire services, and, and also our EMT services. Because after the, because during the COVID-19 pandemic, we saw how volatile and important they are here in our community. I want to create an efficient and effective city hall so that developers can create and develop homes for, for our community members. And also we need to start investing in our roads and, and infrastructure, especially with Dairy Gold and Amazon coming into our community. We need to have the infrastructure in place so that we can promote economic development. And I believe with my experience as a housing authority commissioner, planning commissioner, and also a code enforcement commissioner, I think I can get the job done. And I actually know I can get the job done. So again, just collaborating with our county and other cities, we can make Pasco truly a great place to live, work, and, and, and be in.
Thank you very much to you, too. Thanks for those introductions of sorts. Now, question two, we'll move on to Mr. Peralis getting the answer first here. And it's on the topic that's dominated most every discussion here for the past 18 months. And as federal and state rules on COVID-19 evolve, what should the city's position be regarding those federal and state mandates?
I think the city needs to kind of push back on a lot of these safety mandates. Again, I, I got the vaccine, and, and I wore a mask, but it gets to a point when you see too many businesses shuttering. I mean, look at all the businesses that are needing ARPA money here in our community, almost 175 businesses. We cannot do this anymore. We need to be able to chew gum and walk at the same time. So I would like to see more vocal, vocal council members and just trying to collaborate with, with Governor Inslee and the Benton Franklin Health District to try and get our business up and running. Again, I take this pandemic very seriously. It has decimated the Latino community. A lot of, a lot of people in Latino community have died and have been affected, lost loved ones. And so again, I take this very seriously. But I think with the last year, we've been able to get new data, find effective ways to, to, you know, move away from COVID-19 and just get our lives back. And that's what I want to try and do on the city council. Again, follow the science, put out effective measures, and give businesses the ability to, to open up their businesses. Because again, I've seen a lot of businesses across the nation, a lot of places across the nation. I mean, a lot of people are moving because of these kind of onerous safety measures and COVID-19 measures, and they can't get their job, and they can't get their businesses up and running. So that's what I will try to promote while on the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peralis. Ms. Torres, same question to you. What should the city's position be regarding these federal and state COVID-19 mandates?
Well, I definitely believe that the city should have more local control over those mandates. Last year, I was working in commercial lending, and I had to help close to 400 businesses myself manually inputting their paycheck protection program loans in. And it was really eye-opening to see that a lot of these businesses had to shut down. We need to have more local control on having a say whether, which businesses should be shut down. They should have never been shut down. Those businesses should have been allowed to stay open while the big box stores were open, the small ones had to shut down, which I did not agree with. We definitely need to make sure that we are not hindering economic development in our community. Because not, not only did it affect our small businesses, but it affected people in our community. They couldn't pay bills, they couldn't pay rent, utilities, those kind of things. So we need to make sure we have more local control in our community.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Torres. Now, we'll move to our third question, and we're going to attempt to get away from the topic of COVID. It's been hard for the past 18 months. In fact, expressly so for this question, as we hope you'll be working in a post-pandemic world at some point. And Ms. Torres, we'll sort of approach this issue broadly, excluding COVID. What do you think is the most controversial issue you will face if elected and why?
I would probably say homelessness. There is a huge issue with homeless population, especially in the downtown area. I think that is one of the most controversial issues that we are currently facing, aside from COVID and the mask and, and mask mandate and vaccine mandates that are happening. But I truly believe that homeless population, we need to find, we need to come together and find a measure to take care of that. The second one would be a regional detox center. I think that plays into as well as homeless, with homelessness. And if we can come together as a community by having a regional detox center, we can help alleviate some of these issues. And with affordable housing as well, it will help fix some of our homelessness population also.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Ms. Peralis, same thing. And once again, we're excluding COVID from this conversation. What, what do you think the most controversial issue will be for the city council if you're elected and why?
I agree with Nikki Torres. Homelessness is a really big issue, and along with that would be affordable housing. Again, we're at, we are at crisis level here in the city of Pasco. We have, we have a vacancy level of 0.5% for every home that's vacant or apartment. You have 18 applicants. Again, like I noted earlier, I mean, the, the average price for a home is $400,000. We need an effective housing action plan to start building more homes. We're going to see upwards of 120,000 more people here by 2038. We need to create incentives for developers to come in and start building homes. We need about 700 to 800 new homes each year to accommodate that growth. I think we can do that. I believe with my experience, we can get the job done, along with collaborating with the Home Builders Association, Tri-City Realtors Association, and other people, and developers, to start looking at our zoning and also just the reg, looking at all the regulations and fees that developers have to pay in, in order to create affordable housing. So, so affordable housing and homelessness are two key issues that we need to start addressing.
Thank you very much. And our fourth and final question sort of combines a couple of topics we've touched on already here tonight, growth and infrastructure, and specifically when it comes to roads, even a road in the city of Pasco. How do you think Pasco should manage rapid growth in terms of traffic and land use to avoid or relieve a situation like what's happening on Road 68? Mr. Peralis, your first here.
Well, I think when you have people like, sorry, like businesses like Amazon come in, I think they should have to foot the bill a little bit and provide some money to provide that infrastructure and help out the city. I also think we need to start talking with our state legislators and find more ways to get more grant money, not only from the state level, but also the federal level. And then perhaps by looking at our budget and cutting some of the fat out of that, and focusing our infrastructure, focus on our roads, focus on our, on our sewer and our water, and just start making investments there. I would like to see our local government get back to those core functions, such as providing, providing sound infrastructure for our businesses so that our businesses can grow and prosper. Again, that, this, this infrastructure issue comes down to tax money. I'm a big proponent of the, of the infrastructure bill that's coming from Congress. We need to do what we can and start investing in our crumbling infrastructure. Because if we do that, we will just see a lot of economic development here in the city of Pasco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peralis. And Ms. Torres, last response here, and you sort of touched on this in your first comments, talking about roads and infrastructure. How do you think Pasco should manage rapid growth in terms of traffic and land use to avoid tough road situations?
Well, tougher situations, I think, can be alleviated through zoning and permitting, and also by partnering with Franklin County. Franklin County, you know, our roads, they combine. We need to have connectivity. And right now, we currently have east-to-west connectivity issues, and that needs to be alleviated, especially with our continued growth. We also need to make sure that we have, our roads are white enough when they are first built, so that we need to have those conversations with Tri-City Association of Realtors and HBA and other builders as well, and developers, to ensure that we are building them out right the first time and not having to go back and fix them. So continuing to maintain our roads so that we have safe, integrated, and efficient transportation system is going to be key in promoting our connectivity here in, in Pasco, especially as we continue to grow. But partnering as well with Franklin County is going to help.
Well, thank you very much for answering these questions, taking some time to meet with us virtually tonight. We're still able to do this, and it's nice for voters in the counties over there. That does it for our look at the Pasco City Council. Nikki Torres, Leo Peralis, candidates for the position three seat on that council. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Well, that moves us now into a race for the Pasco School Board. There are a couple of contested races there. The race for District Three or Director Three includes Cynthia Ledesma and Steve Christensen. Ms. Ledesma is here. Unfortunately, we did not hear back from Mr. Christensen. But we do have both candidates here for Position Five. Incumbent Amy Phillips is facing challenger Michelle Andries. So here's what we're going to do tonight. Ms. Ledesma will join tonight's debate with Ms. Phillips and Ms. Andries. We will remind our viewers, she is running in a separate Pasco School Board race, but since we are addressing the same topics, we'll do a three-person debate format tonight. So we will have six questions. Each of you will get a chance to go first. Response times will be a little bit shorter, but I'll make sure you know how much time you have and that we do that fairly tonight. And the first allows for a little bit of an introduction. And that question is, what's your biggest goal for running for this position and why? Ms. Phillips, you're first on the ballot for Position Five. You go first here.
Right now, my, my, my goals have primarily always been around student achievement. And right now, with our kids missing so much school last year and the year before because of COVID, our kids are more behind than they have been in a long time. We've made a great deal of growth in the last eight years, growth that I don't want to lose with those kids. So I feel like the most important and my biggest goal right now is to make sure our kids make up for that learning, for that loss, and that we can continue to, to make growth like we have in the past. Our growth has really gone up in the past in the sense that we have made huge gains in our graduation rate, in our ninth grade on track for graduation, and in our, and in our preschool readiness. Our preschool readiness really took a hit this year, as did, as did some of our reading scores and things, things that really need work. I think that's really important.
All right. Thank you very much. And Ms. Andries, same question to you. What's your biggest goal in running for this position and why is that?
My biggest goal is concurrent with Ms. Phillips in terms of academic achievement, but that people who, students who actually graduate are able to go on to higher learning or certification, that they are actually literate to do so. And our scores are very low. They're the lowest in Tri-Cities. I believe it's time for a change, a drastic change, to be more assertive and aggressive on those. But my, my goal is twofold. It is to involve the family and the parents more directly with the partnership of the, the parent and the teacher and the child in the classroom. Parents are significant factors to children's success. And I see a lot of very good movements that direction, but I also believe that there should be a lot more involvement of parents and their rights actually should be also recognized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Ledesma, last to go here in the Director Three race. What is your biggest goal in running for that position and why?
I think mine aligns a lot with Andries in that I do think that our, you know, that there's, there's progress there, a lot of progress still to be made with a lot of students, especially, okay, you have your graduation rates that are up, but in all reality, where are these kids going? Where are they in terms of, you know, comparing them to the rest of the nation? You know, there, I know of a lot of parents, I'm very active in the community, and I know that a lot of them are very concerned and express to me that, you know, my kids are not getting the education that they should be getting. Why are we paying these taxes if they're not getting the education? They're coming out with a low GPA, and that's how they graduate. They're not understanding what's going on. So I just, that part of my, what I want to do is be trans, be able to be transparent and let them know what's going on.
All right. Thank you very much to the three of you. And for question two, we'll begin with Ms. Andries on this one, with the topic really at the forefront of everything right now, COVID-19, particularly now that students are learning in person statewide. What should the school district's position be regarding federal and state COVID mandates?
Well, that is a very difficult place to be right now, because the decision was made in the legislature and even by the governor himself. I think that mandates are not appropriate right now. I think that vaccinations are only eight months old. We're discovering many problems, and that the vaccinations are wearing out in six months, even after the second booster. So I think that's a conflict. I think that the, the school boards are caught in a, in a situation where they cannot acknowledge or work too well. They can do some accommodation with teachers that need to teach from home or online, but they need to be teachers in the classroom. And I think that the people are saying, the people themselves are saying they need to have charge over their own healthcare, and that includes teachers that need to wear masks and distance, and, and families and children that don't need to be wearing those masks. And I think that I've heard that said from Ms. Phillips as well.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Ledesma, that same question to you. What should the district's position be regarding federal and state COVID mandates?
I'm not all for mandates. I think everybody should, you know, have a choice. But we also have to look at what our goal really is, is to educate the kids. We have to look after them, after our communities. Yes, the vaccines are not, you know, they're, you're still, you're still going to get sick. This is our new reality. Let's be real here. The main goal of the vaccine was just to keep people from getting, you know, the, the really severe symptoms and filling up the hospitals, you know? You don't want to be having kids, family members being, you know, sent out to different hospitals. You have a lot of, you know, our low socioeconomic families who aren't able to just travel. So we got to think about that and also their education. And so face-to-face or online, I mean, those should both be options.
Thank you very much. And the last response going to Ms. Phillips here. What do you think the school district's position should be regarding some of these mandates?
I'm not anti-vaccine or anti-mandate. I think it, I think the government has really overreached in, in their attempt to, to control all things COVID. Their attempts for, have worked, you know? Flattening the curve didn't work. All of these things didn't work. Vaccines, we know vaccines, and there are, that there are ample, there's ample proof that vaccines save lives. And so encouraging, incentivizing vaccines is great, but mandating them is simply wrong. It takes away our freedom. It takes away our, you know, our freedom and our personal autonomy. So that isn't right. And we've already proven we can keep students safe and, and staff safe with our current, with our current protocols. So why are we requiring now these, these vaccines and, and things? So that's my stance on, on vaccines.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And now, question three actually gets into some curriculum here, and really a major topic as far as that's concerned, that's happening around the country. What's your definition of critical race theory? And as a board member, would you be for or against including it in the school curriculum? Ms. Ledesma, you're up with a one-minute time limit.
Okay. Well, critical race theory really is about, you know, you, what human rights and natural rights and what, you know, what everybody's rights are. And the curriculum, we bring it in, in critical race theory, we're actually bringing in and being inclusive, bringing in the stories of other people's realities, not like your dominant ideology that's out right now. I mean, why is it, why is it bad? Why is it something that is looked at as bad? You know, we fail students in their education when the goal is to align our future, future adults to the idea of we want as a, what we want as a country as a whole. So, you know, setting those stories aside and not allowing children to have conversations and learn how to discuss is just not, it's not right. It's not pedagogy.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ledesma. And Ms. Phillips, same question to you. Your definition of critical race theory? And would you be for or against having it in school curriculum there?
I love how you said your definition of critical race theory. I ask people if they know what critical race theory is, and very people, few people even have a clue what it is. It is, it is a theory where you critically examine the intersection between race and US law. And, and when you, when you propose it like that, you ask people, do you want a whole curriculum devised around critical race theory before, between this intersection of, of race and law? And nobody wants that. We can teach history from various perspectives and still honor our forefathers and still honor this constitution that's made us the greatest nation in the world, without going into this very, very strong, very left-wing ideology where they completely change our whole curriculum all around, around a very narrow focus of race and law. So I am against putting critical race theory in the schools. I think we can teach equity and inclusion without critical race theory.
All right. Thank you very much. And Ms. Andries, same question to you. I'll just repeat it one more time. What's your definition of critical race theory? And as a board member, would you be for or against including it in school curriculum?
Well, as Ms. Phillips said, it is lumping people into groups and choosing oppressors and oppressed. And that intersectionality is very dangerous to our children and to us as a community. This is why I like local control, because Franklin County and Pasco School District is one of the most diverse in the state. And our town started with African-Americans as central, then it moved to Asian, then it moved to Russian, and now it's Hispanic. And we and our own families are all interrelated racially, if you're just going to take skin color into account. What's important to remember- What's important to remember about critical race theory is that what I think they're trying to do, and they go a bit too far, is they're trying to bring us together around our celebrating our differences and our unique experiences without judging the others. And that's not what critical race theory does. It definitely puts oppressors and oppressives oppressed. It's not good.
All right. Thank you very much. And our next question we move on to is a little more broad, and it's fitting as, of course, you will need to assess student success across the board, but the key is in the strategy for doing that. Now, we only have 30 seconds for responses on this question and the rest of them moving forward. So the question is, what policies should the board enact to make sure student learning and student success is for all in the district? Ms. Phillips?
We have five main goals in our district that the district knows district-wide. Those really help us to get to the point where our kids are achieving and critically. You know, state tests help states know what's going on, but they don't help us because they come too late. So those common formative assessments, they're assessments that happen in school at the moment that tell us whether or not these kids are learning what they're learning. Those kinds of things, they are key. So that is another thing that we really can do to help. But there's more than one way to do these things and to test these, test things, like making sure that kids are socially and emotionally safe and they feel safe. So that's a loaded question to do in 30 seconds. There's so much that we are doing and that we will continue to do.
I know 30 seconds doesn't do it justice. Thank you for trying on that one. And we'll have the same question for Ms. Andries as well. What policies should the board enact to make student success for all in the district?
Well, once again, I do believe local control is important. And I've been pushing for the Iowa Basic Skills Test. It was accepted nationally. It helps us compare state to state where our students are at. It costs way less, like $2.50 to $3.00 per test per subject, and it also demonstrates the actual achievement and mastery of subject. Assessments are relative. We have this math where if you tried, you're just as successful if you get the wrong answer as you do when you're not successful if you get the right answer the wrong way.
And that question now goes to Ms. Ledesma. What policies do you think the board can put forth to ensure student success for all?
Well, I think just, yeah, changing up the way that we, we kind of, we put all this together, that we get all the information. So I'm not sure exactly what they use right now, but the curriculum, I think, is what we really need to look at and what we're allowing to be taught and how it's being taught in the classroom really affects everything.
And, you know, question five is sort of maybe a part two to this. And Ms. Andries, you get to start here. What are your plans to help reduce Pasco's dropout rate, but especially in regards to Latinx students?
Well, I think there needs to be a clearer communication and a more update for those classrooms and teachers that have Hispanic students. But we have to pay attention to another factor. Students that are being raised in a single-parent home or without a dad is a significant factor and always has been. Obama quoted it years ago, in 2008, voting Politico, that the multiplication of dropout rate is, I have it right here, actually, five times more likely, five times more likely. So more communication with the teacher, the parent, and the child.
And Ms. Ledesma, same question for you about reducing the dropout rate, especially in regards to Latinx students.
I think what it is, is that our, our teachers, our staff, our administration is not, they're not understanding what these kids come from. A lot of these kids are, you know, falling through the cracks because they're just kind of pushed away. I don't have time for you. And I've been told myself with my face that that's, you know, what they're doing. So we really need to change that culture.
And Ms. Phillips, same question to you.
Pasco's dropout rate has decreased dramatically under my watch. In the last eight years, we have gone from a 30% graduation rate to an 81% graduation rate. We've also gone 56% of our ninth graders being on track for graduation to 82.9%. We've done a great deal to get our kids to the point where they can, they can graduate, and they are, there are less dropout rates. One of the key things that we have done is we have allowed for more college credit as well as we have allowed for more certificates, and making sure that our kids are not only graduating at a higher rate, but they're also capable of conquering what they need to in the world.
All right. Thank you very much. Finally, question six, and 30 seconds again here gets us talking about diversity. And demographically, Pasco School Board does not currently reflect the school population. Should this be remedied and why are we not? Ms. Ledesma, you're up first here.
I think it does. It needs to be, something needs to change. We really need somebody who really cares about these students, who knows where they come from, who can deal with the hardships, who can deal with those students who are just really hard-headed. There's different ways of going about these kids, and a lot of them are actually leaders. We just need to focus on them, bring them out, you know, watch them grow. These are some of the best kids, and we're losing a lot of leadership.
And Ms. Phillips, same question in terms of diversity on the school board.
Right now, we're in the middle of redoing our school board according to the Voters' Rights Act so that there are more opportunities for Hispanics and other cultures to serve on the board. But besides, diversity in our schools is phenomenal, and we are working hard to celebrate that diversity. The other thing that we're working really hard to do with diversity is to offer more career and technical education, because that's where these kids seem to want to go. And as we've offered more certificates, we have helped make these kids even more successful.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Andries, same question to you.
Yes, there was, there is a redistricting going on, and originally, it was going to be deferred, so people would have to run countywide, and I'm doing that. It's very expensive. It's very difficult. And to Ms. Ledesma's point, people need to be coming from their groups and coming together and coalescing and collaborating together from those different perspectives. They are underrepresented. I represent my area. Ms. Ledesma would represent her area. And I do believe that kids are graduating at a higher rate, but I do not believe they're as literate as they need to be. And I'm glad that they're including vocal, technical education, because many of the Hispanic folks and do navigate to a less expensive route to lift themselves up, and they're very savvy about it.
Very much. That is our look at the Pasco School Board Director Five and Director Three races. We had incumbent Amy Phillips and Michelle Andries, and of course Cynthia Ledesma running in the Director Three position. Thank you to the three of you for connecting with us virtually tonight. And thanks again to everybody who was with us virtually tonight from both West Richland and Pasco, and thanks to those out there watching who we hope are just a little bit more informed today. And voters do get a chance to make their voices heard coming up on November 2nd. That is Election Day, also the deadline for in-person registration. Mail ballots are being sent out from both Benton and Franklin Counties this week. Now, our fifth and final set of debates will take place tomorrow as we focus in on Benton City, the city council races there, a race in the Cuyahoga-Benton School District, and one race on the Port of Benton Commission. Tonight wraps up night four of our debate series airing this week, and if you've missed anything from this or previous nights, be sure to find them on the Northwest Public Broadcasting YouTube channel. For everybody here at Northwest Public Broadcasting, thank you for joining us to learn a little bit more about your candidates, and have a good night.